Okay, we're live.
Okay. Okay, everybody, we'll start by signing the pledge, find a flag somewhere. Why do we just? The United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. For all. Remind everybody that June 6th is D-Day. It'd be nice to commemorate all of those who have left and all of those who have left us here on this earth that day. So take a moment and remember those folks who fought and died for all of us. Approval of minutes from our previous town board meeting on May 6th, 2020. Do I need a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Motion by Jeff Martin, second.
Second.
Second by John Burskevich, is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Ranger.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Burskevich.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so carry. Okay, Sleepy Hollow Water District, I want to thank all the folks who are on tonight for your patience. I know it's been a long road. Our bids came in higher than what we had expected, and this is part of the process. We got caught up in this health emergency that we're all in, in the whole country. And as soon as we get this done, we'll be sending this off to the comptroller's office. And I will be making some phone calls at the comptroller's office, trying to get this to rise to the top of whatever needs to be done. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that, and our bids will hold from WD Malone for our project. So I need a motion to open the public hearing for the Sleepy Hollow Water District.
So move, John.
Motion by Jeff Martin, second.
Second, John.
Second by John Burskevich, is there any discussion? Okay, public hearing is open. So is there anybody here to speak for or against the Sleepy Hollow Water District?
Well, I'd like to speak for it, Dick Riley. Hi, John, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I see you're weathering the storm.
Yeah, a little grayer.
Stay tuned, you'll be a lot grayer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're all anxious to get this ball rolling.
Yep. Okay, anybody else?
This is Jim Phillips. But, hey, am I understanding from what you said that this hasn't gone to the comptroller's office yet? Because I was under the understanding it had gone to the comptroller and were waiting for his approval.
This project has been to the comptroller in the past, but because of the changes we're making, there's a requirement that it go back. And we asked a good part of that application redone so it can go out as quickly as possible after tonight.
Okay, exactly, like I said, I thought it was already there, and we were running this public hearing in parallel.
No, you can't submit anything to them until you've actually done this.
Okay.
The parallel part was we were working on it.
Okay, fair enough.
But as soon as it goes, I'm gonna make some phone calls. I've made some new friends on this control board that I'm on for Central New York and stuff. So I think I'll be able to help move things along here, so.
Okay, that would be appreciated.
John, that would be really helpful. Right now, we've got two septic tanks in close proximity to the well that are in trouble.
I'm aware of that whole situation, yep.
One more nail in the coffin.
I know, I know, this has not been, nothing has been very pretty the past couple of years, so.
Right, right.
Yep. All right, anybody else? Okay, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, John.
Motion by Jeff Martin, second.
Second.
Second by John Burskevich, is there any discussion? Did I, I need to do a roll call.
That's the close, right?
Yep, I needed to do a roll call.
Okay, so we're gonna close it now with a roll call vote.
Okay, Counselor Ranger.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Burskevich.
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Okay, Carrie. Okay, motion to open up a public hearing for Sleepy Hollow Water Extension Number One Public Hearing. So I'll need a motion for that.
So I'll make it.
Motion by Jeff, second by Carrie. Is there any discussion?
John, I have a question.
I gotta do a roll call first, Dick.
Okay, thanks.
Carrie.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Burskevich.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay. Dick, yes, what do you got?
What is Extension Number One, refresh my memory, is that the other than Sleepy Hollow Road people?
Yeah, that's the one that goes, that's going down the hill so we can get the pump to pump the water up there.
Oh, okay, okay. Because I noticed in the verbiage that there's a $3,800 hookup fee for the extension. That doesn't include Sleepy Hollow Road people.
No.
No.
No, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Taylor Botar, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you want to explain that to Mr. Riley for us?
Yes, so the extension, Dick, like John had mentioned, that's on Salt Springs Row going down towards Tobin Drive.
Okay, I'm with you.
So because those people do not currently have water service like you guys do on Sleepy Hollow, they would be responsible for connecting to the water service that we installed to the edge of the right-of-way.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So just one other thing, because on Sleepy Hollow, you guys already have water services that go to the right-of-way. Our plan is just to reconnect to those, so that fee does not apply to you on Sleepy Hollow.
Right, good. That's great, thank you.
And anybody else? Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
John, I think somebody wanted to speak.
Okay. Somebody on would like to.
He raised his hand, I can't hear his voice.
I can't hear anybody.
Looks like Warren wants to say something, but I don't know if his microphone's on, maybe.
Okay, we'll give him a second to put that on.
Warren, I think you're muted still.
If he can't speak, there might be a chat function, he can type in what he wants to say. But I don't know how to do that.
He's not muted.
Hold on a second, Pat's gonna call his house.
I was gonna say, somebody make a phone call, call Dick Riley and tell which one.
We're doing that as we speak, John.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Yeah.
Hey, they can't hear you, do you know how to turn your speakers on? Well, no, they can't, they can't.
Well, then what do you want to say?
You can say it. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Okay, Warren wants to know when we can anticipate struck, construction to begin.
Warren is asking, when can we anticipate construction beginning?
Hey, Taylor, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I think best case scenario would be this fall, you know, as John has mentioned, we still need comptroller approval. So I think a best case would be comptroller approval sometime this summer, and we can break ground with WD Malone this fall.
The unfortunate thing, the unfortunate thing is, we're already into the first week of June, it's summer, so, you know, I'd like to say last month that we haven't done. But like I said, I'm gonna make a bunch of phone calls as soon as John's got this paperwork ready. And we'll see if we can, you know, get an answer within 30 days or so.
And Taylor, we need to get Malone moving forward too, see if he's in the queue.
I have a quick question on that, can we just clarify? You know, you said, once the comptroller start, signs off this summer, best case, we could begin this fall. Is there any way you can break down the steps that need to happen between the comptroller and then, just so we know where that?
We're, we're good, because we've got the price from Malone. The only thing we're doing is hoping that they're gonna hold their price for us. So as soon as we get the okay from the comptroller's office, we can turn Malone loose.
Right, so, but they've got work, they, I know they have work they need to do between when they get the contract award and when they can break ground. And I just want to break that down.
Better than myself, Taylor?
Yep, so once we have contract, or excuse me, comptroller approval, we can issue a notice of award to WD Malone. From there, there's things like bonds and insurance and the actual agreement between the town and the contractor that would need to be executed. And then WD Malone would have to submit equipment submittals, you know, such as what type of pipe they're gonna use, pumps, things like that. We would approve them, you know, as the engineer. And then, once WD Malone has those equipment submittals, they can physically start construction.
Okay, thank you, Taylor, because I had, I had a pretty good picture of that, and I just wanted to make sure everybody on this understood why there was a lag between when the award was cut, the contract was awarded and breaking ground. There's a lot of upfront work that needs to be done.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay. No, but, yes, somebody wanted to talk?
And I move we close the hearing?
Okay, I was just gonna say, I'm glad we're not back in Green Acres days where they gotta climb the telephone pole, Dick, to make a phone call.
If this keeps up, John, we may be there again.
Well, you might, you might. Mr. Martin has made a motion to close the public hearing on the Sleepy Hollow Water Extension Number One. Do I have a second?
Second, Jen.
Second by John Burskevich, is there any discussion?
Well, John, just thank, thank you guys for your efforts.
I'm just sorry, it isn't faster, Dick, and we're, we're trying the best we can, and we're gonna see if we can get them pushed along and all, but so we can get you guys some good water here shortly, so.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yep, yep. Counselor Ranger.
Aye.
Counselor Martin.
Aye.
Counselor Burskevich.
Aye.
And I myself.
In order to authorize it.
All right, the motion to authorize the project and to move forward to the comptroller's office.
Sleepy Hollow.
For Sleepy Hollow.
So moved, John.
Okay, we're gonna do one at a time, so this is for Sleepy Hollow right now, I need a motion. So move, John. Motion by John Burskevich, second.
Second.
Second by Jeff Martin, is there any discussion? Counselor Ranger.
Aye.
Counselor Martin.
Aye.
Counselor Burskevich.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so, okay, same thing on the extension, I need a motion.
I'll make it.
Motion by Carrie, second.
Jeff Martin.
Jeff Martin, is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Ranger.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Burskevich.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so, okay, Carrie. Okay, good. All right, Jeff Martin, we have our emergency purchase of our door locking entry system. Last month, the magnets went bad in the doors down to the port system. It's not that old of a system, but it's antiquated already, and we have a quote of $36,865.54, which would fall under an emergency purchase to be able to get the doors working again. So I will need, Mr. Martin, do you want to give us a rundown?
Yeah, I've had a chance, so Beth's been working hard on this, and she's found a company. She presented it to me, certainly, the hardware really needed to be replaced, the crash bars, it's a, it's a fire safety issue, we probably should never have had the magnets in. The access control is obsolete, so it's, it's time to get this thing updated. I'd love to say it's cheaper, unfortunately, door hardware on aluminum doors is extremely expensive. So by the time we get done with the latch bolts, software, wiring, and the new hardware, it's $5,000 is a, is a very fair number. Get our building up to code so that it meets all fire safeties as well as security.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay, I need a motion to go ahead and allow Beth to purchase this and get it underway.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Martin, second.
Second, John.
Second by Mr. Burskevich, okay, any discussion? Mr. Ranger.
Aye.
Mr. Burskevich.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. How'd you like that, Cindy does that.
Way to change it up, nice. Woke me up.
Okay, um, do we have any firefighter applications? No, no budget modifications, I have two things. You can go out and eat at your favorite restaurant because they are allowing outside seating as of tomorrow. The state is, thank God, so people will be able to go out and eat at their favorite restaurant for outside seating. I suspect next week they'll open up inside seating to a limited amount. I'm gonna talk about the state budget here a little bit. As a result, solely of COVID-19 pandemic, New York State is facing a $13.3 billion decline in revenue, approximately 14% in the fiscal year that started April 1st. This is a reversal from the projected revenue growth of 6.7% before the crisis. Over the four years of the state financial plan, we face a $61 billion revenue loss. We have received no funding to offset the revenue loss. At the same time, the federal decision to delay income tax payments from April to July also pushed the payment deadline for, for state income taxes. This in turn means a delay in about $9 billion in revenue for the state. This combination has created a significant cash crunch, and we'll want, we want to limit the need to borrow even on a short-term basis as much as possible to keep overall costs down. As a result, we are currently analyzing the proper timing of release for capital grants and funds such as AIM, that's Aid to Municipalities, CHIPS, that's the Highway Money, and EFC, Environmental Facilities Corporation, to ensure that the state has the resources to accommodate disbursements for these and other capital initiatives. Going forward, in the absence of other federal funding to offset our revenue losses, we are developing a plan to reduce state spending by over $10 billion. About 90% of the state funding supports schools, healthcare, and local grants and services for the most vulnerable populations. And any category where we don't reduce spending will simply mean deeper cuts in another category. That came out of the state budget today because there's been a lot of questions on CHIPS funding. I believe we're gonna get most of it, but it's gonna be a delay in getting the money, so. I would, we're gonna have to plan accordingly with that. Does anybody else have anything for the meeting before we go to advice of counsel?
Yeah, actually, John, I do. As you know, I've been assigned as the liaison with Mr. Taylor from the wild. I've asked him to join me this evening, he, we had, we had kind of talked about presenting to this board this evening, so I'm gonna turn this over to Jeff Taylor right now.
Hey.
Hello. So I'm here tonight to, to make my commitment to the town and to the board that I will fulfill the PDD and pursue the application, the permit, to get the permits that I need to run the wild drive-through safari park under Taylor's Wild Enterprises. So I'd like to start the process at this point. I'm already in the, the map is almost done, should be done the next couple of days, and I'd like to continue the process and get it on track to have the PDD done and hopefully expedited time if possible, and get this put behind us and get us all working in a positive direction. I would also like and request that there's a vote by the board tonight to withdraw the lawsuit filed to shut down my business in exchange for my commitment to go forward with the PDD process. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah. Yeah, first off, I appreciate you coming forward to see us. It's a lot easier to speak to you, I know it's not in person, but we are, you know, face to face to try to resolve the issue and get, as you said, move it forward. And I do appreciate that you took the time out and are addressing it with us versus different camps, I'll call it, thank you for that.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here, like I said, I just, I would like to get in a positive direction with the town, I'd like to work with the town. Given the situation of the COVID is why we're at where we're at, and I'd just like to work going forward, I'd like to make money, I'd like to pay a lot of taxes. That's part of operating business in the town, and I'd like to have a successful business going forward.
Jeff, this is John Langy, I was on the phone for quite a bit of time today with Jim Rome and your attorney. We had a very nice discussion, and we talked about the idea of contacting the court in the next 24 hours and seeing if the court would let Jim and I speak to the assigned judge and letting them know that we're trying to work in a cooperative manner, subject to what, I still have to have a conference with this town board about everything, so I'm not making any promises, but one of the, one of the ideas was that we speak to the judge and let them know what this is about and that nobody's trying to put you out of business, but that we need to come up with a path for success for you, which I think everybody agrees, we can try to, try to do that if, if all, if everything lines up and you do your commitments, et cetera. So my recommendation for the board tonight would be to follow what Jim and I talked about today and discuss this with the judge hopefully as early as tomorrow or tomorrow morning. And then, there's no, there's no restraining order on you at the moment. We've asked for one, but it's, it's not in place, you, you don't, you don't get restrained from continuing your business because nobody's looking to put you out of business. And that doesn't happen until the judge says so. So at this moment, we'd like to go talk to the judge about a path forward for you that doesn't involve financially harming you, because nobody wants to do that, and I talked to Jim Roman about that, and when, when I give legal counsel later tonight to the town board, we'll further discuss that, and you'll have an answer as to, as to what direction I'm gonna be going in with Jim.
So if, if my question is, at this point, the board, the board had to push this forward, the lawsuit, along with Larry Ball, my request for a vote to suspend the lawsuit amongst the board members, they would halt the process, and the judge wouldn't be involved, as this is a town matter, I don't know why we're going to the Supreme Court judge and asking him his opinion when you guys are the elected officials in the town to make the decision and be on record in voting to hold this lawsuit, put a pause on it, in good faith of me immediately getting on the PDD process and us working together, I mean, that, it doesn't, I'm not necessarily comfortable without going to the judge, it's not up to the judge. The judge is, yes, he can sign off on the injunction, but it's ultimately up to you guys on whether you want to proceed with the lawsuit. The lawsuit got to this point and got on the judge's desk because you guys pushed it forward. So there's no reason why you can't vote to, to suspend the lawsuit at this point in time. And that would be in good faith would make me feel better about things is that I've gotten mixed information, and that's why we're at the point we're at, that I would just like to put behind us and get on a positive path.
Well, my, my recommendation to, to the board is to receive legal counsel before making any decisions. And when you withdraw a lawsuit, you withdrawn the lawsuit and it's gone.
So you recommend, recommend.
It's a board job, yeah, let me, the board to get that advice, take that into consideration, but when I spoke to your lawyer earlier today, we talked about a path forward where we allow the judge to help us work our way through this with, and have that jurisdiction, which could be helpful for you and to the town and the residents. So at this point, I wanted to speak to the board and give them legal advice so they can make an informed decision.
What, what's the purpose involving the judge? Because this is a little bit different than, because I did speak with my attorney, and, I mean, attorneys do one thing, plus the town, and it costs me money. The town board members were elected, and I believe, I understand you're giving them legal counsel, but I also believe that they have the ability to vote on this, to suspend the lawsuit at this point in time. In good faith, I understand you're a lawyer and you, that's your opinion, but it's also their decision, if they would like to vote on this, they have the opportunity now to vote to suspend this lawsuit, you don't need to go to the judge, you have the ability. Doesn't need to, they don't need to spend money on an attorney to go talk to the judge, and I don't need to spend money on an attorney to go to the judge and find out. You have the ability at this point in time to suspend it. I understand.
I, I understand you'd love for the town to drop the lawsuit at this moment, I need to give legal advice to the town and consistent with my discussion with your attorney about ensuring that you're gonna follow through with this promise you're making tonight. And my only concern would be, because we've been through this before at the planning board and other levels where things are gonna get done, and without a doubt, certain things did not get done, have not.
Without a doubt, a lot of things did get done, I didn't come here to have an argument with you. I came here under different pretenses than this, and I don't want to get to an argument, I want this all behind us. I, I, I want to operate my business, I know you're a lawyer and you want to make more money, and you want to charge the town more money, but I don't see why there can't be a vote at this point in time, you want to cost me money, you want to cost the town money. I don't want to cost it, I personally don't want the taxpayers to pay any more money for the situation. I am saying in good faith that I will fulfill my commitment, and if I don't, then you could easily resubmit the lawsuit. But we don't need to cost the taxpayers of the town of Sullivan any more money, it's, it just doesn't need to happen.
John Becker, should we go into executive session for legal counsel and then come out and discuss this more, would that be more helpful?
Is our Zoom guy gonna be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, so we.
Okay, so Mark, what we would need, because it's a public meeting, the original, to get attorney advice is not part of the open meetings law. However, if the board desires to go back into the public meeting after we discuss legal advice in executive session, we just need to have a mechanism where we can let the public back in.
Yeah, we'll go back live on the county YouTube page.
Okay, so what, what will the instructions to people that are watching this be right now?
Wait, don't leave, stay tuned.
Okay.
Before we go, we go in, I want to, I got a couple of questions. So, so Jeff, you're operating right now, correct?
Yes, I'm currently operating to save my.
We haven't, we haven't stopped you at all from operating.
I've received a cease and desist letter.
You haven't stopped operating.
There is a $370 a week fine and up to six months in jail, so that's what I've received.
We're gonna put you in jail, so.
Larry Ball's letters.
Jail or anything else, but you are operating every day since you received the first summons and since receiving the lawsuit.
For the survival of the wild, yes, I am.
Okay.
But Jeff, let's be clear, there was never a request for jail time, I know you mentioned it right now.
It says in the letters, it says up to six months, so I don't know what was requested, I do know that a judge, that a judge signs on it.
There's never been requests for jail time, and we didn't send the sheriff over to shut you down or anything.
I, I've not seen a sheriff.
Okay, no, I just want to be clear that you've been operating since, you know, all this start, so.
Yes, my, um, okay.
Okay, so, if, we're gonna need a motion to go into executive session for advice of counsel, and then, we're gonna come back out when, once that advice has been given, and then, the next steps will be to take whatever actions we decide to take, if any, and then close the meeting from that point on. But Jeff Martin, we're gonna have to ask Mr. Taylor to step out, probably out of your house or something, out of your shot, because this is a private. probably out of your house or something out of your shot, because this is a private, I mean, the the council and the board.
And that absolutely will happen. Okay, just before you go, what happened? Okay. Go ahead, he wants to make one more statement, please?
Frozen.
I'm frozen, huh? There we go.
So, just like the last thing is, is I, part of the reason I'd like to have something about tonight is because I would like to go out and be able to calm the overall situation also, and that is in benefits to the town, I don't want the town in uproar. I would just like to have a clear path going forward, or we can let people know, people are questioning us, the town could then, then they so I think it's a mutual benefit to have a decision based on the lawsuit tonight on where it stands. Thanks.
Yeah, we need Mark to let us know when when the All right, yeah, we need the motion.
Do I need a motion?
I'll make it.
Kerry, motion by Ranger, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Martin, is there any discussion? Hey, Mr. Bershkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Ranger?
Aye.
And I'm an I.
Wait, just shake it up again.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, is 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 Andy staying on or Andy still in too, in Bath?
Now, how, what do you want me to do, how do I get out of this?
You're out, I could, I can.
In public, in public shit. That wasn't good, yeah. Andy, did you need anything in in our public meeting before we go into session?
Well, I just, I guess I wanted a couple of things. We had the access agreement from the D E C that I wanted to discuss, that John was very well aware of.
I forgot about that.
Okay, so, do you wanna let him know, John, what that's about?
You know, a while back, he had during COVID nineteen, the E C, I've had a few other clients that have gotten letters in the D E C where they want to come onto certain town properties, whether it's a closed landfill or perhaps a highway department piece of of land, and they want to poke around a little bit on it, and they did send us a an agreement where they're allowed to come on, and they're they've been waiting for us to have somebody acknowledge that and sign for it. So I think Andy just wanted to make you aware that's out there, and I and I've been getting many more phone calls lately saying, are you guys gonna finally sign this, and I let him know we've had very few meetings talk about it. So we're at the point now where we have to let him know that we're gonna go ahead and sign that thing, but I think I talked to Andy, making sure that he'd be able to go along with anybody from the, the D E C is using a consultant to go on the property, so we would want Andy to accompany this person and, you know, walk the property to see what they're looking at and being able to ask questions about if they have any concerns, and I don't know, I don't know that there are any concerns, they have no idea.
So the letter was addressed to me, and they want me to sign it, and I don't want to sign anything without, I I'm okay with signing something if the board is okay with you signing it.
What's the alternative, you know, they're gonna want to get a quarter or something. What are we gonna do?
Yeah. I talked to Dave Haney at Burton LeJudas as well, and he said, if you don't sign it, he goes, they're gonna come on.
Yeah, I I've had it in other places, they poke around, and either they they want you to do something or not do something, but you just don't know.
And I think they're looking for old landfills and that kind of thing, but all right, I'm all, I'm okay with that, yeah, I'm fine. You, is everybody else okay?
I know I. Andy, you don't perceive any negative feedback from them, right, like, wh- where were they looking to?
I guess groundwater, I think they really want to look at, they've contacted Parsons, I guess they're environmental, and they want to come in and do some poking around, so I I believe that has to do with water, and probably neighboring wells.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm on board if everybody else is.
John Bershkevich, I'm fine. All right, Andy, you got anything else?
Streetscapes, we did start that last week, and we have about fifteen thousand of our forty thousand dollar commitment already just with some purchase of some materials from the town, but it's mostly labor and and equipment, so I think we're gonna easily hit our forty thousand dollar threshold, so that would be good. And the other thing was that I've discussed with a few of you is the county is trading in two rollers, and I would like to upgrade one of ours. The one that I would like to upgrade is sixty five hundred dollars. The town offender will buy ours, which is a seven year difference for fifty five hundred dollars. So there's a thousand dollars difference there. And then there's a dirt roller that they're also trading, and that is seventeen thousand dollars, which I I was trying to get a couple towns to go in on it, but I I didn't really have much success, so of course, everyone will want to borrow it, but they don't want to, you know, pay for it. We do use a dirt roller quite a bit, do we have to have it? No, but it it's a good opportunity to buy something that the county had maintained at at a decent price, so I kind of want your blessing on on doing that.
Well, we can rent that to the other towns.
Well, usually we borrow one, we do borrow one from other towns. So, but the closest one I have to borrow is a Nelson, so but, that's, that's what I got.
So you'd have an ad about eighteen thousand for the two?
Correct.
I've had it with Andy over the time, he knows his equipment, he knows his budget. I'm comfortable with these purchases.
All right, where's the money coming from, so I know?
Well, I discussed it with Beth, I mean, I could take it out of the DB fifty one ten point four, which is maintenance, or I could take it out of my CHIPS line, which you can purchase equipment with your CHIPS money. Or we also have about a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in sale of equipment and a a fund balance. So it really could be taken out of any of those.
Well, hopefully our CHIPS money comes, that's the only thing, I'm worried about that.
I know. I got a email today from the, Dave Clement's retired from CHIPS, but I got an email today and from the new guy that replaced him, and he expected we're we'll be getting our letter within the next couple weeks, so that was
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion for that?
I'll make it.
Motion by, second by who?
Jeff.
By Mr. Martin?
What's the specific equipment again?
A regular roller and a dirt roller.
Ingersoll Rand.
Ingersoll Rand.
I'll send you all the information.
Oh, yeah, good, okay, thanks.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, Counselor Martin?
Aye.
Counselor Ranger?
Aye.
Counselor Bershkevich?
Yes.
And I'm an I. Kerry, okay, you got any thoughts, Andy, for us?
Uh, no, that's it, we started some maintenance paving, that's going really well, and we're moving along well, no, no glitches.
All right, thank you very much.
Andy, don't forget my dead deer.
Oh, I did forget it.
That's why I'm reminding you.
Okay, we'll get it first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, he does. Okay, so did we vote to go into executive session?
Uh, no, let me see, hold on.
I made a motion to.
Yeah, you need to actually do the vote, you got a motion, Kerry and Jeff, I don't think I got an actual vote on.
And you want me screwed out?
I can put you in a wait, Beth, I can put you in the waiting room if you want.
You want, John?
All right, I need, we got a motion made in the second, so I need a roll call, so Counselor Ranger?
Aye.
Counselor Martin?
Aye.
Counselor Bershkevich?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Kerry? Okay, we're going into executive session, you're gonna put Beth in the waiting room?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave, and I and I'm gonna turn over the the hosting duties to John Langy. And I'll and I'll put Beth in the waiting room, then you guys call me when the executive session is over and I'll come back on.
So how do I get back in?
You'll just just wait, Beth, I'll get you back in when it starts.
All right.
Still saying live on YouTube?
I know, hold on, I gotta do, I gotta remove Beth. I need to put Beth in the waiting room. And then I'm going to give John Langy the control of the meeting. John Langy, you are now the host.
Thank you.
And the, actually, John, you gotta, and you end the live YouTube.
Okay, hold on, let me remember how to do that.
No, I'll just, I'll reclaim host and do it, I'll do it.